Good morning, everybody, and welcome to TLC Life as every Wednesday at 11:00 in the morning. Good morning, Orlando Sanchez.
Hello, Globe Trotter.
Yes, a little bit, a little bit. I was traveling all over the world.
Celebrating her birthday across the pond.
Yes.
Did you have a good time?
Oh, my God. It was amazing. I had a great, great time. And I'll share with you all the pictures and all the stories later.
Felicidades. ¿Cuánto cumples? Thirty-six. She's thirty-six today.
Well, you know what? I feel like my thirties, but no, I will be, I am forty-nine. I will be fifty next year. Very proud.
Incredible.
Very proud.
Well, we hope you're around another fifty years.
Exactly. Thank you.
All right, so today, we're gonna touch the topic of education, which is an important issue for the future of Texas, our children, and our taxpayers. And we have two guests today. One is a candidate for position nine, and the other one is a candidate for position seven. So we're delighted that both of them have taken time out of their busy campaigning schedule, because we're in the middle of early voting, right?
We're in the middle of early voting. October twenty-ninth is the last day of early voting, and November the second, next Tuesday, is gonna be general election. So you guys still have time to go early voting. I love to vote in early voting. I don't want to wait till the elections day, because you never know what's gonna happen. You know, today was like raining and crazy day. You don't know what's gonna happen on Tuesday, so it's better if you guys go and cast your vote on early voting, which is still October twenty-ninth.
And these are critical races. You know, we don't have a lot on the ballot other than the local school boards, some local issues, and the constitutional amendments. So make sure that you are aware of the issues. There's a website I'll recommend. It is the League of Women Voters. They'll lay out the issues and the candidates. They don't endorse, but they simply tell you, give you a plain English and Spanish explanation of the issues that we're gonna face with respect to amending the Constitution in the state of Texas. And then, most candidates have replied with a bio, a short brief, on who they are and what their positions are for the various positions that they're seeking. These are low-turnout races, so your vote will make a difference. This is where conservatives can make a difference. If you want to affect the quality of education in Houston, it's important that you get out and vote. These candidates have been working hard. They've been raising money. They've sacrificed time from their families to get out and serve you. The school board races are unpaid, so these are strictly volunteer positions. But the school board, at least at the Houston Independent School District, runs a massive budget. So we're gonna have two candidates that are running for positions on the Houston Independent School District Board of Directors or Board of Trustees. Now, as you know, education is a critical issue for us. Both of us being Hispanic immigrants. You know, English is my second language, so when I came to America, I didn't speak any English. It was all Spanish. We didn't have...
And I'm still trying to speak English.
Yeah, and Andrea's still trying to learn. She's doing a good job. But, you know, I think, I firmly believe that a good education stabilizes, will preserve our democracy, will preserve our freedoms and our liberties, and will preserve constitutional government in this country. But if kids don't understand why it is important to live under a constitution that grants freedoms to us, not to the government, that makes us the persons that, you know, hold the power, not Washington DC, not Austin, Texas, then, then, you know, our liberties will be diminished. I mean, I don't wanna overplay that, but it's critical that children have a good-rounded education. And understanding civics and understanding government and understanding, you know, basic finances are absolutely important. And if not, you know, people are gonna look to government, and government's gonna get bigger. And the bigger government gets, the more they taxes, the more they diminish our liberties and our freedoms, and the more the government becomes omnipresent in our life. Omnipotent and omnipresent. Do you know what that means?
Obni-presencia, sí.
Okay.
Sí, se parece mucho al español.
So let's take you back a couple of years ago, where Andrea and I decided that we were gonna go to the Houston Independent School District Administration Building.
December twenty-eighth, two thousand eighteen.
Correct.
I have it in my head like it was yesterday.
Yep, and we decided to hold a press conference to highlight the failing schools and Texas inability to close down these schools, as is required by statute. Now, an African-American by the name of Harold Dutton wrote the legislation that said that if schools continue to fail, it will be the duty of the Commissioner of Education in Texas to take over these schools and try to... Basically, it's like a bankruptcy, right? When a bankrupt company is put into a receivership, there's trustees, and so they try to fix it, depending on the chapter that you file under in bankruptcy code. But that's what needs to happen in our schools. But the far-left, the unions, those that are leeching off the taxpayers, decided to attend this press conference in droves and then literally formed a phalanx that came towards us. And what you're gonna see is what happened on that day. So Mark, if you wanna roll the video, go ahead.
Breaking news, there is chaos at H-I-S-D. Look at this. Someone throws water on the Harris County Treasurer. Things even getting downright physical in a dispute over the future of the district. And now, police have been called to the scene.
Our David Gonzalez witnessed it all. He is live at Northwest Mall. That's just across the street from the H-I-S-D Administration Building. David, what is going on?
Reagan Len, an absolutely wild afternoon for Harris County Treasurer Orlando Sanchez. He actually planned to have a press conference at 2:00 PM. He wanted to address the issue of the failing school district, or what he believes to be a failing school district. But it did not go as planned, because he was not expecting a group of H-I-S-D community members to show up and disrupt that press conference. Actually, the press conference did not go off as he expected. They were yelling, things like "shamed." They were saying that he got voted out of office. And right now, police are here on the scene because of an incident that took place while he was addressing one of my questions. A member of that group actually dumped water on him and took off, and there was some kind of physical altercation between members of Sanchez's team and some of these community members. Police have shown up because possibly pressing charges. Just take a look at that moment that happened earlier today.
You should be absolutely ashamed of yourself. And the sad thing about it is, you're not.
Are you like Shane? Like Game of Thrones?
Back on track, but that did not happen. Police right now here, live on the line, talking to people, because some of these H-I-S-D community members are wanting to press charges against someone on Sanchez's team who they believe assaulted them after the water incident. Off to the side on this side, we do see Sanchez is still here on the scene, talking to police officers behind a police car. Right now, we're still trying to figure out exactly if he plans to press charges. I did ask him that during that press conference, and he says that he's gonna try to decide that right now as he talks to police. Reagan Len.
Unbelievable stuff going on there. David, thank you. Watch more of the wild encounter right now on the K21 News Facebook page.
Well, and there you have it. You know, shame and shame, shame on us for standing up for the taxpayer, for the children, and for the future of Texas. You know, it's shameful that in a democracy, you cannot hold a press conference in the public square and share your vision and your ideas and your suggestions without being physically assaulted. And so, yeah, no charges were filed, but there is a pending court case. We've been successful on the appeal, and it's back on the trial docket. So we'll see what happens with that. But here's the point. The point is that the people that want to ensure that the children and the taxpayers of H-I-S-D get shafted are the people that showed up shouting "shame on us" for bringing attention to the failures. Let me repeat that, to the failures of the Houston Independent School District. H-I-S-D Board Trustees have been indicted. They've been convicted. They have funneled millions of dollars of the taxpayers' money. They've squandered the money that should go into the classrooms. They squelch parents when they come to school boards, not only at H-I-S-D, but across the country. They're driving an agenda that is an indoctrination agenda, not an education agenda, and that does not bode well for the city. So, we have invited a young man by the name of Joshua Rosales.
Joshua Rosales.
Yeah, roll that R.
Rosales.
There you go.
Joshua Rosales. Que además es el primer latino para postularse para una posición del Distrito Nueve de la H-I-S-D.
Yeah, and Joshua came to my attention through a friend of mine, and I had had the opportunity to visit with him. Actually, got to hear him speak at The Patitlan Restaurant on North Main. He did a great job. And we decided we wanted to bring him out, so you can see the kind of quality candidates that Texas Latino conservatives tries to find to represent you at the Houston Independent School District. And I'm gonna let Joshua talk about his bio, but let me just tell you that he has been endorsed by the Harris County Republican Party. He's been endorsed by the C-Club of Houston. He's been endorsed by the Hispanic Republicans of Texas. He's been endorsed by the Texas Latino conservatives. He's doing a fantastic job. I'm assuming, Joshua, this is your first race for office. You're raising some money. You're getting your name out there. And I think that you're gonna have a great opportunity to serve the taxpayers of the Houston area. So welcome to the program.
Thank you very much, Andrea and Orlando. It's a real, real honor to be here on the program today. Thank you for the invitation. Buenos dias, and para todos los que hablen español, sí, es un gran honor estar aquí con ustedes. Real, real big honor, especially with Orlando, who's been a trailblazer in our Hispanic community here in Houston and elected office. So, you know, grew up watching all the work you've done. But correct, Orlando, this is my first political campaign. You know, I'm a concerned parent and citizen that, you know, has seen, as you mentioned in your introductory remarks, the failing and basically how H-I-S-D's failing our families and failing our children. And so, as a PTO president over the last two and a half years at a historic elementary here in the heart of District Nine, which is basically the south part of the city of Houston, the south corridor, if you wanna call it that. I've been a PTO president at Hobby Elementary, which, you know, was happy to learn that you're actually an alumnus of Orlando, which is really great to hear. And, you know, it just testament to the potential our students have of all communities and backgrounds. We just need to make sure that they have those opportunities. But this is my first election, Orlando. Like I said, as a PTO president, I've seen the failures. And, you know, as many say, in order to see change, you need to get involved, and that's exactly what I'm doing.
Tell us a little bit about your background. I'm very interested, because you're an inspiration not only to me, actually, but to young Hispanics that aren't like you, Joshua, that have come to this country, like me, that came to this country without the benefit of being able to speak English. You know, as I said in the opening remarks, I'm sure that you would agree that education is the key to success in this country. Every child deserves a quality education, regardless of whether you live in the barrios, regardless of whether you live in the fifth ward, the fourth ward, the second ward, or Memorial, Spring Branch, it doesn't matter. Every child deserves an education. So tell us a little bit about your background.
Yes, definitely, Orlando. Well, you know, I'm a Christian. I'm a conservative. And I'm a proud Hispanic American of Guatemalan heritage. I was born and raised in Lake Jackson, Texas, in southern Missouri County, so, you know, outside of, you know, right, right south of Houston. You know, high school there, and then I was able to, you know, blessed to go to the university in Chicago, at DePaul University in Chicago, to get a double bachelor's there, international studies, Spanish language and culture, as well as economics. Was able, you know, been able to travel the world, Orlando, all over, you know, different continents and study abroad. Live in another great city like Chicago and just be able to see how, like you said, whenever government gets too big and too bureaucratic, you know, really fails to serve the needs of its communities. And so, you know, having those experiences, Orlando. You know, I did a few years in law school and then continued with my business career. I've now almost thirteen years working in the corporate law sector here with one of the largest global law firms in the world in business development and communications, strategic planning. And, you know, like I said, you know, I've been blessed with wonderful education with parents that really promoted my educational development. And, you know, I should have been a statistic, Orlando, just like many children in District Nine and across Houston. But thankfully, you know, because of that opportunity that I had through great schools, great mentors, parents that were supportive, and also my own personal drive and understanding that, like you said, education, quality education is the ultimate door opener. And, you know, now I'm blessed to live a great life. I have a wonderful career. And now, you know, I'm a candidate to wanna give back to the community and inspire more, more people and show that, you know, whenever you have good leadership, effective leadership, with conservative principles as well, you know, effective principles, you can get a lot done.
And, I mean, those are the principles of the Latino community. I mean, in spite of what the media wants to show, conservatism is the principles of the Latino family.
Joshua, I wanted you to talk about your platform. And, you know, we already know that the system in H-I-S-D is not working. And not only is it not working, it's getting worse. So what is the first things that you want to do or change once if November second, you win the elections?
Definitely. And I agree, Orlando. I think, you know, conservative principles, it's part of our culture. And so, it's really just, you know, getting back to those fundamentals. But to answer your question, Andrea, really, my platform's on four points. Number one is putting our students and campus needs first. You know, for far too long, we're putting other priorities, and it's really going back to putting our students and campus needs first. You walk around our schools, and really, they're underserved and many, 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 you know, inside of the school, infrastructure, community, parent engagement, there's not there. You know, parents are currently banned from being on campus, and that has to change. So that's one of the immediate things that has to change, because if you're cutting out the parents and community engagement, then there's a real issue with that partnership in the public schools. And, you know, we need to hold our schools accountable. The second thing is making H-I-S-D more efficient. You know, as Orlando said, you know, it's too big. There's too many layers. It's not agile enough, and it's not serving the everyday needs of our families. Also, improving customer service is really big. Right now, the customer service at H-I-S-D is absolutely horrendous, and that needs to change. Families, if you were to take a survey, they're highly, highly dissatisfied with the state of the district. And then, third, basically, bringing more investments into District Nine. So, you know, making sure we balance the budget, making sure that we're really going through line by line and investing in strategic things that are really gonna move the needle for academic achievement, for prosperity, for our communities and our families. And we're serving the needs that the community has. Finally, providing every child in Houston a world-class education. That, to me, like Orlando said, education, not indoctrination. So we don't need to be trying to bring ideology into the classroom and, you know, politically-charged discourse or curriculum. But we need to teach our children how to read and do math and science and civics, because at eighteen, other countries, you know, their youth are becoming scientists and leaders in their fields and STEM, et cetera. And our kids cannot even read at grade level. We're not gonna be able to compete as a city, as a nation, if we don't fix that.
One of the problems that I've seen over the years, Joshua, and you can address this if you know about this. And one of my big concerns for low-income children, and particularly Latinos, because, and recent immigrants, because many of our parents, for example, in my family, I was, you know, the first one to graduate from university. My parents didn't have formal education. It's here in this country where we can avail ourselves of that quality education. But one of the concerns that I have is that our children in the inner city don't have access to good counseling. In other words, college admissions have become so tough, you know, and arduous. I know college isn't for everyone, and I'm certainly not promoting college for everyone. Certainly, a, you know, a technical school, a two-year college, or maybe a nursing program at Houston Community College or any of the local junior colleges is a good option. But for those that do aspire to get a bachelor's degree, a master's degree, perhaps a PhD, some of these kids do have good intentions, have good grades, but they don't have access to a counselor that prepares and reviews their essays. They don't have, they don't have the knowledge and the resources to take prep courses for the ACT and ACT, for example. And I don't know if they still administer those. And so, wealthier families have access to that. Mom and dad are legacy graduates of the University of Texas, University of Houston, Texas Tech, or A&amp;M. But for immigrants and low-income parents, they don't have those resources. Mom and dad are working. They don't have the time to review those essays. They don't have time to take the kids to the prep course for the SAT. And so, they're going to have to rely on the school district to provide them adequate counseling and oversee their application process. Is that a problem in District Nine?
Yes, very much so, Orlando. And, you know, whenever you were talking about that, I relate a hundred percent, because that was exactly the process that I went through. You know, my parents promoted a lot of education, but they had no knowledge of the way the US system works with applications. You have to apply a year before. You have to do this test, test prep courses. You know, these things that are not cheap and not just easily accessible for communities, like you said, that either have, you know, less, less educational levels or, you know, lower-income communities. So, you know, to me, I definitely can relate to that, and that is a big issue. You know, we need to basically, you know, bring more of those resources so that we can make sure that our children in District Nine, you know, have access to these counseling, to these mentors, also to, you know, list of alumni and others, and also find strategic partnerships in the community, not only in District Nine, but outside of District Nine that we can rely on to make sure that we're counseling, we're giving those insights so that our children and families are educated. Because especially in our Hispanic communities, you know, there's a language barrier, there's a culture barrier, there's educational barriers. And there's also, you know, just the fear of getting involved. And so, finding creative ways to bring more people in. And also in African-American communities, you know, like you said, a lot of people are busy, working, or, you know, come from various home situations. And so, bringing those resources, and, you know, we definitely need to do that in order to increase college enrollment. But like you said, also vocational and technical enrollment as well, so that folks that aren't going to look for a four-year degree, you know, they can have the resources to go into a vocational or technical career.
And you do, well, maybe you can share with us, but I'm assuming that District Nine is majority-minority, meaning a lot of African-American kids and a lot of Latino kids.
Latinos, yeah.
Correct, correct, and that's exactly right. Historically, our District Nine is predominantly an African-American population. Over the years, we continue to see a shift, you know, as we see across all of Houston and Texas, where we have more Hispanic communities that are growing. And so, that definitely is the case in District Nine. I would say now, District Nine is predominantly of Hispanic heritage, but you do have a very significant African-American community. And you do have more on the west side of the district, bordering Meyerland, a significant Anglo and Asian community as well. But the majority of our students in District Nine are of Hispanic descent.
Joshua, you were talking at the beginning about your platform, and something that is very important. And as a mother of twins, I have boy and a girl. They're not going to, they're not attending private, I mean, public school. But I always say, education comes from the house. You know, the first education comes from mom and dad. And that's very important about your platform. Evolve the parents in the education. And have more access, or them to have more access, about what is going on at the school, about understand what is going on at the school. Because you were saying about the language barrier. Many Latinos, as you were saying, the population in the District Nine is a majority of Latinos. And many of those parents, as Orlando was saying about his parents, I mean, and your mom were not speaking English, right? And that's very important. You know, we need to have more access to these parents, the resources in both languages, and help them navigate the system for them to understand what their kids are doing, what their kids are getting, what education are getting.
Exactly, Andrea, and I think, you know, that's what I have seen in the community here, a lot of excitement. Because as you mentioned, there hasn't been another Latino Hispanic candidate run for school board in this part of town. And with the majority population being of Hispanic heritage, you know, to them, it's exciting, to the Hispanic community here, it's exciting to see leadership that reflects, you know, their realities and that has that multicultural background and understanding linguistic capabilities to relate to their needs. And like you said, right now, H-I-S-D has a one-size-fits-all policy, and that's just not working. We need to have tailored policies, strategy, methods in order to reach all families, especially here in District Nine, that, you know, have very unique needs in comparison to other districts of H-I-S-D.
One last question. One of the things that I've always been interested in is how to improve the quality of education. And I believe, like in the private sector, or let's say Major League Baseball, now that everybody is focused on the World Series. To build a championship team, you've got to pay for talent, right, Joshua? I mean, I don't know if you're a baseball fan, but I remember when the New York Yankees and the Steinbrenner loaded up with multiple ballplayers that were very talented here in Houston. Jim Crane, who's the current owner of the Houston Astros, invested heavily to bring talent to the dugout, and you see the results. In every industry, if you're in a law profession, to bring in the best lawyers, you've got to pay and compensate those people. I think the same principles apply to public education. And to me, it's a bit disconcerting to see the salaries that teachers are making. I think that we ought to compensate and reward quality education. And so, have you given some thought to what the district can do? You know, are there enough resources? Do the taxpayers? I mean, my God, H-I-S-D has a huge, you know, tax burden upon property taxpayers here in the district. But what can we do to improve the compensation for quality teachers?
Definitely, Orlando, and yes, I was at the ballgame last night. I took my nephew. I was bummed that we didn't get to win, but hopefully, we'll get there in six, right? But to answer your question, yes, I agree. You know, part of my platform is putting our students and campus needs first. That includes teachers, staff, other campus workers that are front lines, that are helping our children. You know, we've gotta take care of our people. And what that means is paying them, you know, increased wages, finding creative ways to make sure that we're taking care of their needs. Like you said, in order to have the best talent, you have to create the best workplace environment, not only at the school, but also in the district. And make them, you know, get them to buy into the overall vision of the board, that they can see that there's a vision, that there's stable leadership, and that, you know, folks are really, you know, going to do a great job for the whole district to move it forward. But yes, we definitely have to increase salaries. You know, we have to take care of our people, because the organization, H-I-S-D, is only gonna be as good as its people. So that's definitely real important. We gotta, we gotta, we gotta do that to make sure that other districts around us don't take that talent. Because right now, we're four hundred, four hundred people short, and, you know, that's just unacceptable. So we have to recruit and retain our talent to take care of our people.
All right, well, we're down to a minute, so...
Well, Joshua, as I always say, call to action. And I wanted you to invite people to vote, because it's very important. You know, sometimes we just pay attention to the biggest, to the biggest races, and we know that H-I-S-D is something that impacts our community. So please, call to action. Tell us the community when early voting, general election, and also send a message in Spanish.
Perfecto, Andrea. Muchas gracias. Voy a empezar en español y animo a todos a que salgan a votar hoy mismo. Toda esta semana hasta el viernes veintinueve de octubre que tenemos votación temprana. Es crítico si queremos ver cambio que salgamos a votar la comunidad hispana y que utilicemos ese derecho que tenemos en este país de votar y hacer el cambio. So, o sino dos de noviembre. For our English speakers, I'll say, you know, it's time for change. The status quo cannot continue. This is a crucial moment in our city's educational process. And, you know, we need people to get out. As Orlando said, this is a low voter turnout. And a few people are gonna decide the future of our kids, of our city, and we just cannot let that happen. So we need folks that are families-oriented, you know, that are not content with the status quo, to get out and vote right now until October twenty-ninth, early voting, November second, Election Day. And, you know, we need to make sure we bring the right leadership. We need to improve and ensure that, you know, H-I-S-D does not continue... And, and ensure that, you know, H I S D does not continue to fail our children. So we need every vote and uh, you know, appreciate your support if you're uh, listening from District Nine or you know someone in District Nine. Call them and, and make sure they get out and vote for, for Joshua Rosales.
Yeah, we cannot continue to have failing schools, we can't continue to fail our children, our taxpayers and the future of the state of Texas. So these races are critical, make sure if you're registered to vote, go vote early. We just want to thank Joshua for taking time out of his campaign to visit with us, share some of the issues. We want to wish you the best of luck and give us a call and let us know if there's anything else we can do, Joshua. Go out and, as they say, break a leg.
Thank you Orlando and Andrea, thanks for the opportunity, for the support and, and God bless all, to all the listeners that are here. And we're working hard to win, uh, so uh, thank, thank you very much.
By the, by the way, by the way, uh, I know this is your first run for office and you're a rookie. So first, uh, share your website with us and number two, if somebody wants to make a financial contribution to help your campaign, where do they do it?
Thank you very much Orlando, my website is Joshua Rosales for H I S D nine dot com. That's F O R uh, and the number nine, so Joshua Rosales for H I S D nine dot com. You can go to the donate button there and, and every support helps right now to get us in a better, stronger position to win on November second. So thank you for that opportunity Orlando and.
All right, take care.
Gracias Joshua, and from District Nine, now we're going to District Seven.
Yeah, we're gonna just swing around the city up on the west side, so from Meyerland, we're gonna go up toward the I ten corridor.
Yes, so uh, our dear friend Bridget Wade, I did it, I said it right?
You said it correctly.
Okay, and she was uh, here with us a couple of weeks ago at the studio. And now she's joining us uh, virtual, so Bridget, hello, welcome, como estas?
Hello, como estas?
Very good.
Glad to have you right, uh, yeah, if you won't move your camera, we, we'll adjust it in studio, so just leave your. Just leave your camera where it is, we'll adjust it. Uh, anyway, uh, yeah, thanks for coming back. I guess you might have heard part of the interview with your hoped, hoped uh, soon-to-be colleague over in uh, in District Nine. Um, but uh, talk about some of the issues, and first of all, how's the campaign going, how do you feel about it?
Uh, Orlando, I th- um, I feel great, I'm a winner, I feel great about it. I'm excited about what's happening, I've had wonderful support financially and emotionally. Prayers and all of the above, and it's been great, I've met the best people, I wouldn't trade it.
Excellent, um, let's talk a bit about the issues, you know, we left uh, the interview with uh, your, your friend uh, Joshua. We talked about teacher salary, teacher pay. What uh, what ideas do you have Bridget uh, to, to ensure that we attract quality teachers? Kind of like the Astros have done, attracting quality ballplayers and Mark, what, go ahead and tell us.
Bridget, before you answer the question, please send us your camera, that way we can see you.
Okay, great, so what do we do to improve the quality of the uh, teachers in the classroom to benefit the taxpayers and our students?
Well, I know we talked about with Joshua, uh, about teacher pay. And we obviously know that is the critical element, is teacher pay. We also know that we need to have criteria that allows the teachers to be uh, monitored more regularly. So that they can influence the students faster and get paid sooner for their accomplishments. Uh, I think we need to find money in the budget, we also need it for the support staff. I mean, our cafeteria workers, our bus drivers, these, all these staff also improve the outcomes for students. We know that, we know that they're part of their lives, some kids spend up to an hour a day on the bus. Uh, and then maybe the cafeteria workers know about their eating habits or what they're not doing. Or if they're sad that day or anything, so we know there's support throughout the whole system. And we need to be taking care of the people, so there are ways to do it, uh, we can balance budgets, we can. We know the money is there, we pay a lot in staff at the main office. And we pay for lawyers that are retainer, we do all kinds of things that do not. Improve uh, educational outcomes for our students, direct line to the teachers.
Well, and not to mention the uh, the, the, I guess for the lack of a better word, corruption at the school board level. Where, you know, they're not, they're not following procurement procedures that are guidelines by the state of Texas for public procurements. They have buddies they want to give multimillion dollar contracts to. And so when H I S D, uh, the leadership is wasting money like that involved in corruption. Uh, that only hurts the teachers, the bus drivers, the frontline staff, the, the cafeteria personnel, uh, the taxpayers. I mean, it's so sad, it's so tragic that we have this behavior constantly. It's not as if one person's indicted, it's just repetitive, repetitive behavior. And, 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 and the failing schools are rewarded by giving them a bigger budget the following year. Rather than following state statute and legislation that says, you know, once you fail over a period of time, it's time to shut you down. And I, I just think that uh, that there's money in the budget, if they could, if, if they could streamline operations. They could redirect those dollars into the classroom, improve teacher pay and tr- improve quality of education. And make sure that all these schools, as we were talking with Joshua about, have good guidance counselors. For kids that want to pursue a path to college.
Well, and Orlando, they're also doing, not focused on guidance counselors. They're focused on other kinds of wraparound specialists that they talk about all the time. And I don't exactly know, and some of the other, you know, constituents and, and parents. Don't really know why these ser- what these services are doing completely, and they talk about it and talk about it. And nobody knows exactly what they do. So I think it's important that we're clear on the motivations uh, in the schools. In the camp, on the campus, about what we want to do to help kids achieve. Uh, their academic goals and their forward thinking. We need to give them the agency by providing them with information.
Uh, Bridget, tell us a little bit why, you know, we were talking at the beginning of the show, that these positions are volunteering posi- uh, positions. So why you feel that you wanna donate your time to be a candidate? And also to be part of the board member of the H I S D, why is important for you?
It's important for me because I love my city. Uh, as a native Houstonian, longtime volunteer, longtime civic leader. I know how important it is to invest in our city and the investment is the part I'm excited about. Is being able to have a, a seat at the table to better the impact that our education has on our city. We have so much to gain and at the same time we have so much to lose. If we don't get better people, better leadership, better quality of uh. Of, of thinkers, we need common sense, practical thinkers. And I find myself to be astounded by the fact that we can't come up with more uh, solid solutions. I actually have a big solution that I think could bring uh, local governance back to the board.
Right, you might want to share some of the talking points about that, I'd be curious to hear those.
I would love to tell you about that, uh, if I can ever get my camera straight. Sorry, um, so Orlando, I have a real issue with the fact that we have lost. Uh, a representative government in this H I S D. And there's a simple solution, and my solution is after learning and learning and learning by H I S D. We have nine trustees to represent almost seven hundred square miles of territory. At two hu- two point two billion dollars of annual budget. And we are s- we're failing over and over and over again. I thought, what's wrong with the picture that we have? And the picture is, picture problem is, we've lost localized. Responsibility, and so if we were to form, let's just say, four trustee districts across the city. Of the finances of the same, we use central office to, to manage uh, financial, legal. Structural things that need to happen, and we assign trustees to four different districts. And it would be ideal if we could have four superintendents that represent that trustee district. Hire impressive people that we could have directly influenced into the areas that they need to deal with. So we could see actual results, and it's the same thing we were talking, you were referring to earlier. We've lost track of what communities are desire to see out of their schools. And we uh, lack accountability across this group of trustees. And so if we were to localize trustee groups, if one is failing, we're not failing the whole rest of the city. And our school system, so we can hold those people accountable, they're more localized. We can elect leaders that represent the, the, the ideas and ideals of the areas we live in. People are wanting specialized services across the board, we're here over and over again. And they are not getting results from the current administration. Uh, Joshua mentioned this too, that we're not uh, customer service oriented. And so this strategy could localize a representational government within your school district. And we could have amazing things happen. So we have talent out there and people would not be devoting so much of their volunteer time. In an organization that is completely devoid of ideas and is defunct. I, I'm sick and tired of it, and also we have this amazing city that we have been able to transform. I mean, our city's built on a ship channel, we have NASA and we have the medical center. We have these amazing things working and we can't fix H I S D, we gotta start with a new plan.
I know the legislature has talked about breaking up H I S D, um, but you know, again, um. I've gotta say, I'm somewhat disappointed in the leadership in Austin for. Uh, because I think everybody has to be painfully aware in this state that urban education is failing the taxpayer and our students. And, 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 and I know that Austin has some, some strong forces that are resistant to any type. Of restructuring of urban school districts. But I think that, uh, you know, uh, conservatives ought to apply conservative principles to urban problems. And I know there are conservative solutions to fixing education in the urban area, we've got to fix those. Because those children deserve as good a quality education as any other child. Whether you live in a rich district or a poor district, and I don't think there's anything such as a poor district. Because given the tax rate of independent school districts in Texas, they're all reeling in enough money. Um, and, and it, it, but, but I think the state has to do a better job. I, I hope, have you developed relationships with senators and state reps to, when you win the, the position? That you can go to Austin and lobby for a significant change at H I S D?
That's right, I'm working hard to talk to everybody and anybody involved in education. Uh, from look trustees that were past trustees to legislators, to anybody. I'll ta- I'll talk to anybody and I have been talking to anybody, I've been working out plans, uh, ideas, listening. To people that are beyond frustrated and have tried to change it, but they tried to do it in ways that I just don't think are gonna. Haven't been successful, and that's why it hasn't gone through. This plan doesn't upset the apple cart as much as previous plans. And yet it brings back localized and representative government back to Texas. Or back to Houston, the way it should be, we, we know that there's not one school district in the nation. Over sixty thousand students that's successful, and we have two hundred thousand. So that tells you right there that we need to represent about fifty thousand students per area. And we would find success, we could find amazing opportunities. These board meetings wouldn't go on forever, and we wouldn't have the, the. The talking over the people, the current trustees talk over the public. They don't talk to the public, they don't talk to them in uh, ways they understand, and so it divides even more. It creates bigger problems, so yes, Orlando, the answer to your question, yes, I'm talking to anybody and everybody in education. I would love to see, like we talked about before, the five twenty-nine plan for college savings accounts or education savings accounts. Better implemented throughout H I S D, children are getting a three hundred dollar extra. Payment from the government, federal government right now, why aren't we encouraging savings accounts? Why are we not vouchering kids with special needs, families need options for their children. We need parental involvement and parental options.
One of the questions being asked by one of our viewers, uh, Gaston, is, is money being misappropriated? It says, we know teachers tend to be grossly underpaid and underappreciated.
Uh, the answer is yes. Yes, we know that there are contracts, uh, that are FBI investigations over some of the contracts that have gone on. We know that uh, we pay, like I said earlier, retainer fees for lawyers that we don't need. We need to be settling these lawsuits or we need to be mediating, we need to be finding ways to keep lawsuits away from the beginning.
Have those lawsuits.
Exactly, any business would have failed, I mean, ten years ago, under the circumstances we have right now. So, you know, we, we can do better, we can do better, we, we must do better.
Okay Bridget, um, let's uh, tell us what is your website, um, and how people can reach out to you? And also donate uh, for your campaign, and we know we're still in early voting till Friday. And uh, general elections is uh, next Tuesday, November second.
My website is BridgetForTheKids.com, it's BridgetForTheKids.com. And I appreciate everyone who's been a supporter, I appreciate everyone who's been invested in me. And I just thank you all for your time and your uh, your support and your encouragement. And I look forward to having your vote.
Well, we want to thank you for taking time out and more importantly, we want to thank you for lending yourself out as a candidate. Well, you know, that is a huge sacrifice, particularly for a position that doesn't pay. So it is clear that you're passionate about your city and your district and the kids of Houston. I just hope that, um, you know, you prevail, I hope that you can make some changes. Uh, and we look forward to working with the new school board that is more focused on children, the classroom, frontline workers, than the bureaucracy. Than the taking care of buddies on contracts, which is, you know, becomes such a, frankly, such a laughing stock here in Texas. And, and you know, H I S D seems to take the lead on, on, on mismanagement. And, and frankly, on corruption, which is very disappointing, it's very embarrassing for this community. And so hopefully those things will be fixed with new leadership, so we want to thank you and we want to encourage all of you that haven't voted. Uh, these are important races, as I said earlier, these are low turnout races. And this is where we have an opportunity to make a difference for the kids of Houston. You know, everybody gets excited about voting for the president, but the president doesn't direct the quality of education your child gets. The president doesn't pick up your garbage or make sure that you have clean water at your house. The president will not respond during an emergency, and if you have a medical emergency, it's not the president that responds. The most important races in our country are the local races, and yet they're the least participated in. So please, if you're registered, go vote, we're in the process of early voting. You can stop at a, m- m- any of the multiple uh, locations and uh, and, and cast your vote for the candidate. that, that you believe is going to best represent you. So Bridget, thank you. Good luck. Let us know if you need anything else and hopefully we will see you celebrating your victory on early November.
Thank you Orlando and Andrea. Thank you for what you all do, for our city, informing people. And Orlando, and Andrea, you've been so supportive of me and I just appreciate it so much. I've learned so much from you all. If you only knew how much you all meant to me. So thank you very much.
Well, thank you, thank you.
We're all in it together. Yep, thank you Bridget. We love our city. As immigrants, we love our country. We love our state. We love the opportunities that we have had. We love the opportunities that are given to our children and we don't want to see that diminished. We want our children and their children to have as many opportunities as we have. And we believe that every child and particularly inner city children deserve a quality education. I can't emphasize that enough. The way this republic will continue to be a constitutional government, that is, the principle is liberty and freedom. That the individual is the one that is empowered to direct the direction of government will only happen if everyone does, receives a quality education. The entire republic is dependent on the quality of education. There's nothing more important in this country than a good education. And I don't care the ethnicity. I don't care the gender. I don't care the nationality. I don't care if they're legal residents or U.S. citizens. It is our duty to educate these children because they're the future of our country. So that's why we spend so much time on education. That's why we encourage everybody to get out and vote. Because it's absolutely critically important for our community.
Bridget, gracias.
Thank you.
Alright Andrea, let's wrap up.
Talking about education.
I knew you were gonna talk about San Antonio.
We have Leadership Latino November 6th in San Antonio. We're ready to go. I'm gonna be there. I'm gonna help you, I'm gonna help with, with the workshop that we have, you know. People in front of camera, dealing with media, because this is very important. And I not only say that it's important once you run for office, but you know, talking in front of camera and public speech is very important for everything in life.
Yeah, an ability to communicate your thoughts and ideas to the public and try to persuade them to vote for you as a candidate is important. Making sure your name gets out there is important. There are several ways to do it. You know, there are a lot of folks that want to serve but don't really know how to serve. They, they're a little bit intimidated by the electoral process. You know, where do you file your forms? What are the ethics requirements? How do you deal with the press? You know, how should I dress? You know, what venue should I go to? What's the best way to get your campaign platform out to the public? These are sort of the themes that we try to talk about. And so we have Leadership Latino, which is a seminar that we conduct across the state of Texas. We've been in Dallas. We were down in the Rio Grande Valley, had a huge turnout down in Hidalgo County and Cameron County. We had a lot of support from the local parties down there. And now we're going to Bear County, which is San Antonio, Texas. And by the way, don't forget, speaking of Bear County, that John Lujan
Yes.
is running for state representative in a special election. John Lujan, a great candidate. I was in San Antonio a couple of weekends ago, block walking for John. We had a great team, Juasine Hernandez, the new chairman of the Federation of, of the Young Republicans, which I used to be a member once time, till I got booted out because I got too old. They were all down there. They brought, they brought conservative young Hispanics from South Texas down in the RGV to block walk in San Antonio. It was just a massive effort for.
And when is the election?
Well, it's coming up. I mean, it's going on right now, so.
It's going on right now.
So let's, let's get, let's get John elected to state representative in the southern part of San Antonio that God knows. They've been under liberal Democrat leadership that has failed Southern San Antonio for so long. It's time.
And John is gonna be for Leadership Latino, right?
I think he's coming. Yeah, I think he's making a presentation. So if you want to see John Lujan and learn from a candidate that's actually boots on the ground campaigning every day, John is gonna be there. We're working on some other keynote speakers. We're gonna have a great event in San Antonio. If you want to sign up, you don't have to be a candidate. I mean, if you want to be a precinct chair. Or if you want to be a campaign manager, or if you want to be a treasurer for a campaign. And even if you want to be the candidate, show up. Leadership Latino, no cost to you, thanks to the generosity of our donors.
Totally free.
Yep, that support Texas Latino conservatives. We hold these seminars across the state of Texas. And I can tell you that many of our graduates have gone on to do some very great things. They're running for office across the state of Texas and they're gonna be very successful. They're gonna be future leaders in the state of Texas. And we do this because we're passionate about the state of Texas. We're passionate about conservative leadership that addresses the issues facing taxpayers and, and citizens across the state. I mean, we see, we have evidence of poor leadership, whether it's at the local level at the Houston Independent School District. We see poor leadership in Harris County. We've seen the crime rates soar. We've seen them squandering money. We have both our mayor and our county judge working out sweetheart deals with their buddies and passing multimillion dollar contracts to them. Which has raised the suspicion of, you know, investigative units. And, and, and so this is not the way to run government. It's not the way, it's not stewardship of the taxpayer dollars. So Leadership Latino, if you want to join us, it's November 7th, right?
November 6th.
November 6th, Saturday in San Antonio.
But go to our webpage. You're gonna have all the information and also a link for you to enroll. It's completely free, as Orlando said. It's texaslatinoconservatives.com or leadershiplatino.com. Because we have a link of Leadership Latino in our webpage, Texas Latino Conservatives. But also you want to go straight to the Leadership Latino, we also have a webpage, leadershiplatino.com. And also I wanted you to talk about our special guest next Wednesday in TLC Life.
Yes, Nima Queridol.
It's confirmed or not? The Lieutenant Governor?
Oh yeah, we have the Lieutenant Governor. I can't 100% confirm, but Dan Patrick will be here with us. We will put that up on our webpage as soon as we get official word, but we have been in communication with their directors. And I know he's got a busy schedule. Plus they have finished multiple sessions. So I know that, that the governor and the lieutenant governor and everybody else wants to take a break and spend some time with their family. But yes, we, we have spoken to the Lieutenant Governor who will give us a briefing on the session and what the vision for the future is. And so.
And the redistrict.
And redistricting and, and, you know, a whole host of things. So if you have questions, make sure that you line those up for the Lieutenant Governor. We'll be trying to go through as many questions, written questions as possible. And so, yeah, we're honored to have the, the Lieutenant Governor on the program here in the near future. But check our website. We also are redoing our website, so hopefully you'll get a lot more information, a lot more content. And again, remember, we are supported by donations. You know, the government doesn't send us money. So everything, everything we do is based on the generosity of Texans and the membership that we have. So if you want to be a member, click, become a member. If you want to donate to Texas Latino Conservatives, please do so. You can contact me if you want to visit. Happy to set up a lunch, a dinner, a breakfast to talk to you. But it takes a lot of resources to ensure that this operation, which is growing quite significantly, continues to grow. And I'm telling you that candidates across the state of Texas are calling us and asking us for help. We're encouraged by the number of young Hispanic conservatives that are willing to serve the state of Texas. And we all know, folks, that the demographics of Texas are changing. And then it's gonna be a majority Hispanic state. And we want to make sure that regardless of your race, regardless of your ethnicity, that it is conservatism that leads this state into the future. And that's what we do. We want to make sure that conservative values lead Texas into the future.
And I want to share with you and the viewers, unfortunately, we cannot show the picture, but I want to show this picture because my son asked me this morning to take a picture of him. He was very proud wearing to school the Texas Latino Conservatives polo shirt to school.
Awesome.
So, and he also, as you know, last year with his own money, he became a member. He become a member of the Texas Latino Conservatives.
Absolutely. And we need more young folks. And, you know, I'm surprised this school let him wear that T-shirt.
Amazing, amazing, you know? And he was so proud and he said, mommy, take a picture of me. I know you're gonna have the show today with Orlando. Please show him my picture.
Excellent. Thank you Hattie for promoting us at your school. And let me just say editorially, I have literally traveled this entire state. From the Red River to the, you know, Rio Grande River and from the Big Bend to, to Coastal Bend. I am 100% encouraged about the future of the state of Texas. Because we have dynamite, dynamite, young Hispanic conservatives. And, and, and conservatism is going to rule this state for the foreseeable future. So make sure that you get your inoculation. And, and this is, you know, because we have rumors that Beto, better known as Robert Francis O'Rourke.
He has nothing to do with Latino.
He's gonna run for office. So make sure you get your anti-Beto vaccine. And you can get your anti-Beto vaccine here by following this program. Don't fall prey to somebody who adopted a Hispanic name. Alright guys, we'll be back with you next week. Mark, thank you. We want to thank Mojer Media for producing this program for us every week. We don't give them the recognition they deserve, but it's working out real well. So bye guys, take care, God bless.